Good evening, and welcome to the 2025 Wentzville School District Board of Education Town Hall. Tonight, questions submitted by you will be answered by the upcoming school board election candidates. My name is Faith Bott, I'm a senior on Wentzville Liberty High School, and I will be one of tonight's moderators.
And I'm Lulai Wise, a junior at Wentzville Liberty High School, and your other moderator for this evening. This event is produced, directed, and assembled by our amazing team of students and sponsored by LHS Publications.
Before we begin, please sure to follow us on Facebook at WSDBOE Town Hall and on Instagram at BOEWSD Town Hall for all information regarding the town hall, recaps of tonight's event, and election updates.
This evening's questions were based upon responses from a survey sent out to the constituents of the Wentzville School District. The most popular topics from the survey, as well as each candidate's campaign platforms, were considered in the creation of tonight's questions.
In part one of tonight's event, all candidates will be asked five general questions. Following the fifth round of questions, there will be a 10-minute intermission before we move on to part two. In part two, each candidate will be asked five viewers submitted questions that were determined during the intermission. All candidates will receive the same question.
Throughout part one of tonight's events, you can submit questions of your own through the link at the bottom of the screen. Please keep all questions appropriate and relevant, as these will be what student event coordinators will be picking from for part two of tonight's event.
Thank you all for joining us this evening. We will now introduce two of our 2025 WSD School Board candidates. All candidates were invited to tonight's event. However, one of the candidates, Christina McCormick, was contacted multiple times with no response. Additionally, Danielle Looney contacted us yesterday that she was unable to attend due to a conflict at work. Each candidate has 60 seconds to introduce themselves before the first round of questions begins. We will start with Dr. Jeremy Way.
Good evening, my name's Jeremy Way. My wife Erica and I have been residents of Wentzville for over 20 years. My son Major and my daughter Emmy are both graduates of Hold High School, my son in 2022, and my daughter just last May in 2024. My wife actually works at Piney Ridge, she's been working there for over a decade. For the past couple of decades, I have been a teacher, a coach, an administrator, and I've worked in central office in a couple different districts. The reason I am running for the school board is because I believe that we have a great district here. I would love to be a part of that and help it get a little better. I want to focus on the important stuff, and to me, that's student achievement, safety, surrounding our kids with great staff, and being responsible with taxpayer dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Way. Dr. Scott, the time is yours to present.
Thank you. Thanks again for having us. This is such a great forum, and I really appreciate the opportunity to be here. So my name is Julie Scott. I am the current Vice President of the Board of Education, and I am running for reelection. I have been on the board since 2022, so this will be my second term. A little bit about me, I have, my husband and I are residents of Lake St. Louis. We have two kids, a Green Tree Elementary student and a South Middle student. And we absolutely love this district, and I think this has been a really great way to support the staff, to make sure that every child that deserves, every child deserves an excellent education. And my kind of goal is that teachers and staff feel supported and feel welcome, and that they want to come to work every day while still really giving their all for all of the students to have a great education.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. On behalf of LHS Publications, we would like to thank you for coming out tonight and participating in this event. We will now begin with our first round of questions. You will each have 90 seconds to answer during this round.
For all rounds of questioning tonight, we will go in a predetermined order. We will call on you when it is your turn to speak. Here's your first question.
All candidates here today have received endorsements from local political parties or political action committees during their campaign. How have you approached transparency in disclosing your campaign contributions? What is your perspective on the role of partisan politics in school board races? And how would you ensure that your decisions remain focused on students and the community? We will begin with Dr. Way. You have 90 seconds.
There's a lot on that question, yeah. Well, I will start off by saying that I'm proudly being endorsed by the St. Charles County Families for Public Schools, also Tri-County Labor Club, and then Wentzville NEA. You know, when that started, it's an interview process where you go to them, and you know, my core values kind of align with a lot of the people that are endorsing me. I really have a strong love for public education. I feel like it's kind of under attack, and that bothers me. And so I want to do everything I can to help make sure that we have this available to generations down the road. As far as disclosing your campaign contributions, absolutely. Missouri Ethics Commission makes you fill out a couple different reports, and probably another one coming up. This is my first time doing it, so I'm kind of learning as I go, but absolutely doing that. Unfortunately, I wish there wasn't any politics in school boards. I don't think there should be. I can't tell you how many times I've been asked if I'm Republican, Democrat, or whatever, and I always answer the same. I just care about kids, I care about public ed, and I want to try to serve our district and our community. I've been here for 20 years, I plan on being here 20-plus more, and that's why I'm running.
Thank you, Dr. Way. Dr. Scott, you now have the floor.
Thank you. So just like Jeremy, I too have received an endorsement from the St. Charles County Families for Public Schools, as well as Tri-County and the Wentzville NEA. And you know, I am very proud to state that I have been endorsed by each of those organizations, because very similar to Jeremy, those, their, you know, values and their beliefs align very closely with mine. And that is truly for the betterment of public education. And if you want to make public education a partisan issue, it shouldn't be. Unfortunately, I think that it is, and so that kind of already like labels you, right? Everybody, regardless of where they stand, has some sort of political belief. And you know, there's obviously a huge spectrum of beliefs, and so everybody falls somewhere along that. However, that doesn't necessarily have to make it to the board table. And you know, really, being a member of the board, you get some labels attached to you, you know, the public has their opinions. But I do think it's very important, you know, to keep your focus on what is important, and that's student achievement, that's staff and teachers, and that's, you know, the governance of the school board. So I do think, you know, let's keep it out.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Candidates, here's your next question. WSD residents will vote for school board candidates in Proposition L on the same ballot. According to the Wentzville School District, Prop L is a $135 million zero rate change bond initiative, intended to enhance security, update older buildings, and support various construction projects. What potential benefits and challenges do you see with Prop L, and what is your position on this measure? We will begin with Dr. Scott. You have 90 seconds.
So I am in favor of Prop L, and I think having been a part of this district for so many years as a citizen and seeing how the district has grown while now serving on the Board of Education, and kind of seeing a lot more behind the scenes of things that I didn't completely understand before, I really see now how this money could be utilized very well to continue to support our school district, and ultimately, giving every student the same opportunities across the board. There's been so much focus on the growth of the district, and so much of that was for physical buildings. Physically, the buildings had to be there, because that's, you know, the students needed a place to go. And so some of our legacy buildings have needed a little bit of attention, that hasn't really happened yet. And this money will certainly help, you know, kind of bring those schools up to where they need to be and provide those students with opportunities that, you know, Students at Liberty or, or, you know, North Point have. And also accessibility, some of them are just like, you know, not accessible to students with different needs. So that is certainly a very important part of the prop money as well. I do also think it's important, if we look back at how the district has managed finances and prop money in previous years, and in all of this growth that our district has experienced, all of these major projects have been completed on time and under budget, and I think that's really important for the public to understand.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Dr. Way, you're up.
Yeah, I am definitely in favor of Prop L. The things I like about Prop L is that, as I mentioned earlier, my kids came up through Wentzville Middle School, Hold High School. So I've been in those buildings a lot, but I was in a meeting a couple weeks ago at Heritage, and just to see the building and to see that it could be a lot more efficient than it is. For instance, it has like two cafeterias, I just thought that was, that was different and challenging. And so having the prop help them and give those buildings some love is important. But it's not just those kids, you know, there's safety aspect to this prop, which is great. And so anytime you can harden the buildings and, and keep the bad guys away from the kids and the staff longer, is always great. And so I love how they're enhancing security, you know, you're talking playgrounds, like look how many kids that's going to touch hitting the playgrounds. And then how many of our kids are involved in sports, band, PE, extracurriculars that, you know, we're going to touch up on all the fields too that haven't been done in the last 10 years. So it's not just those buildings, it's pretty much a lot of our kids throughout the district. In all these propositions, you know, there's always a good chance if the economy does well, that you can pay these off earlier and, and go out for more bonding. We are not in hyper-growth like we have been, but we're still in that growth period. And so anytime you can go out and get tax-free bonds, or it doesn't increase our, I'm sorry, zero rate change on our bonds, that's important. So I'm definitely for it.
Thank you, Dr. Way. Candidates, here's your third general question. Many of our candidates have highlighted the increasing issue of transportation within our district, from late buses to parking lot disruption. What issues do you believe this presents our district from a systemic standpoint? How would you plan to implement a more efficient system, and is there a long or short-term solution? We will begin with Dr. Scott. You have 90 seconds.
Thanks. So this is an issue, and I think it's also important to highlight that this is not just a Wentzville School District issue. This is an issue across multiple districts in our state and in the country as a whole. So there are a lot of moving parts to the transportation issue. You know, you have obviously physical staff that needs to be on, you know, the transportation center and drive the buses, and watch the parking lots. You have traffic buildup, you have, you know, construction happening within the community. And I think it's just kind of this, this, you know, mix of all of these different things. One of the things that I think we need to, I think that at the district at least has more of a say on, is, you know, how the transportation staff are employed, meaning do they feel safe coming to work? Do they feel valued in their roles? Are they given the support that they need for, you know, the bus, you know, the driving, the whole experience, you know, from the pickup in the morning till dropping off in the afternoon? You know, having competitive pay and providing them opportunities for growth, if that is, you know, an option for them that they'd like to do. So I think, you know, kind of really starting at the root of, you know, the employees, I think is a really important thing to do.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Dr. Way, you now have the floor.
Yeah, in my current position, I oversee transportation, so like Julie said, this is not just a Wentzville problem. It's a Missouri problem, it's a United States problem. We just don't have as many drivers as we used to, so that's huge. You can take this kind of proactive or reactive. Some of the things that you can do, and other districts have done before, is, I believe, are probably on a two-tiered system. You can go to a three-tiered system where all of your schools, like your high schools, middle school, and elementaries, their all start and stop times are different. It is not easy on kids or parents or the district, usually costs a little more. You can extend how far out you have your buses pick up kids, like a mile out. Again, not good for kids, not good for parents. So those are kind of the reactive, some of the proactive things you can do. You know, you really, when you, when you have drivers, you got to learn to keep drivers. Sometimes, you know, in every district, you might lose drivers because, like Julie says, they don't feel supported. They write up kids for discipline, nothing happens. So I think, you know, trying to get our admin, all transportation people have monthly meetings, and trying to get your admin at those meetings, talk about how you can help train them, talk about what you're doing for your kids in the buildings, to have them, like our elementary principals, they have little workshops with their kids to try to tell them how to act on buses, what we do if we have discipline, things like that. So just trying to work together to find a way to keep the bus drivers we have. But it is definitely a problem, not just here, but nationwide.
Thank you, Dr. Way. Candidates, here's your fourth general question. The role of parental advocacy in education has been a topic of discussion over the past decade. From participation in board meetings to curriculum debates, parents in Wentzville have actively engaged in the education system. In your view, what role should parents play in education? How would you ensure that parents' voices are valued while also considering the expertise and experience of educators? We'll begin with Dr. Way. You now have 90 seconds.
Yeah, absolutely. Parents are a vital member of the team. I see students, staff, and parents working together to try to make sure that their kid is getting the best education possible. There's always opportunities for parents to get involved. You know, you can be on boosters, you can be on PTAs, any of that kind of stuff. But going a little deeper, there's always, you know, last week or so I've been reading up on the CSIP here, and you can get involved with CSIP, parents can get on those committees. You know, I think there's opportunities to have parents' voice be heard, and it's definitely needed. And in the surveys that we put out, I think Wentzville puts out a lot of surveys and gets good information from there. So taking that survey information, inviting parents to things, parents getting involved, those are all ways that we can kind of work together for the betterment of our kids.
Thank you, Dr. Way. Thank you, Dr. Way. Dr. Scott, you now have the floor.
Parents are a huge, a huge player in a student's education, and they absolutely have a place in the career, you know, in the discussion about any child's education. And I think one of the most important roles as a parent is to really advocate for your child, for whatever that they may need. And, you know, really having a good relationship with your students' teachers, with your principals, you know, the bus drivers, everybody that's involved in your student's education. So I absolutely support parents and, you know, them taking a very active role in their student's education. You know, like Jeremy mentioned, there are actually a lot of opportunities for parents to get involved. And, you know, as we have, you know, these committees that you have mentioned come up, there's those, there are, you know, the surveys that we certainly encourage. Like tomorrow, there is a open house type thing for Prop L. That's certainly a way for the parents, you know, to kind of get involved. You know, just really making sure as the district that we know we can get those opportunities out for parents. But I also do want to certainly respect the experience of the educators, and, you know, that, that they're coming from a place of wanting the students to learn,
So I think this, the balance of that and really being an active participant in that, in those discussions about finding out what are, what do the teachers need? What do the staff need? And how can I advocate for them, you know, when these budget discussions are being had? So I think, you know, as a board member, although I don't make the budget, I certainly can, you know, have those discussions and learn more from, from those who are participating in the budget-making process and have a voice for those who, you know, need their needs.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Dr. Way, the stage is yours.
Yeah, at the last board meeting, it was mentioned about finances and I, I didn't realize that 83% of our finances from Wentzville goes to staff benefits and, benefits and salary. And so having said that, I think looking at the staffing plan, every district has a staffing plan to see how many we need per kiddo and, and per building and stuff like that. When it's 83% of your budget, it's so huge to look at that staffing plan. And then besides that, you know, I haven't had a chance to look at it, but, you know, what's in our reserves? That's, that's important. Our capital expenditure fund, what do we have there? If Prop L passes, what are some things we're going to try to tackle? If it doesn't pass, what are we going to try to tackle based on the money that we have available? So looking at those things, also seeing what our reserve is at, those are the things to look at to try to be fiscally responsible.
Thank you, Dr. Way. This concludes our final round of general questions. Viewers, before we begin part two, remember to submit your own questions for the candidates by the link at the bottom of your screen.
Questions from this survey will be answered during part two. Once again, if you would like to submit a question of your own, the link will be found at the bottom of your screen. We will not take a 10-minute intermission.
Welcome back to the 2025 Board of Education Town Hall. We thank you for joining us this evening.
During the break, our student vet organizers sorted through the viewer questions submitted during Part One and have selected five different questions for each candidate to answer. All candidates will respond to the same question and we'll have 90 seconds to do so.
New to the school year is the 70/30 grading system, different from the 50/50 grading system from previous years that weighted tests and assignments the same in the gradebook. What are your thoughts on the new curriculum changes such as AMI days, late start days, and how may they hinder or support student growth? Do you plan on changing or revisiting any of these systems? And if so, how and why? We'll begin with Dr. Scott.
This is an excellent question, and I'm really glad this got brought up. I think when you're like managing the district, you know, as a superintendent and as the administration and, you know, doing kind of the day-to-day work and managing the district, as the board, we also need to be evaluating how all of these things are going. And I think the AMI days, and that was certainly a learning experience for all of us. Um, you know, my kids, I had one in elementary, I had one in middle school, and they were vastly different experiences. So certainly, I do think that the elementary school, you know, students could have done a little bit more, but, you know, I'm not their teacher either. So I certainly think that we also need to be, we just need to be like reevaluating, and we need to be assessing how these things are going. And then, you know, get the input of the people who are being affected by this. Like, obviously, parents are gonna be a big part of that, but also the teachers and the staff, the administrators, who are, you know, going through these different programs and, you know, really having an idea of what's working, what do we maybe need to tweak. Um, I will say, I have heard a lot of various feedback on the 70/30 grading system on both sides. And I will say on the teach, from the teacher's side, I've probably heard more positive than I've heard from the parents. However, again, I think we need to just take a look at it, look at it, you know, with the data. How are things actually happening? And then just kind of go from there and be flexible.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Dr. Way, you now have the floor.
Yeah, you, again, you got a lot in this question, so I will try to answer all of it if I can. The 70/30, um, I think where that's coming from is a lot of times you'll have kiddos that will get As and Bs in the class, but then on standardized tests, they don't do as well. Maybe because they're getting, um, extra credit points or points for doing homework, and we're not really checking that homework. And so with something like that, and it looks like this is the first year you guys have done the 70/30, it's usually good to look at that data, like Julie said, in year one, but then also give it kind of two years to see if it's being, uh, how our kids score on test, if it's being productive, if we're getting better because of it. Um, but again, like Julie said, I think our teachers probably, probably like that better. Um, and it means more, and it kind of shows what our kids know and can do. Um, when you talk about curriculum changes, you know, again, I was reading the CSIP. It looks like we're kind of on a six-and-a-half-year cycle. So every six-and-a-half years, we're gonna look at curriculum, pilot some stuff, which is always a good thing. Um, gotta have that time for our teachers to look at that and pilot some of that stuff. AMI days, again, this is across Missouri and the country. You know, you can have those AMI days, how productive are they? And can you make them more productive? Because a lot of times during the school year, you can get more out of kids, but if you tack those days onto the end of the year, I mean, how many kids are coming to school? Or how many kids are really paying attention or have checked out for the summer? So again, just trying to pack more into those AMI days, and it sounds like that's what we're doing. The late starts are really important for our staff, uh, in order to get some grading done, um, teaming with each other, um, you know, looking over curriculum, things like that. And so, um, I, I don't know what the, what the thought process is from our superintendent on that, but, um, that's where that's coming from, um, and how they may hinder. I think if we have time for our teachers to collaborate and do work outside of school, it's only gonna help our students and their growth. So, um, it's important that teachers have some time to do it and to meet up. And so having those late start days are great for our staff.
Thank you, Dr. Way. That concludes our responses to the first question, and we will now move on.
Several current board members live in the Wentzville community but work as educators outside of the district. Additionally, one of the two candidates here today have careers outside of education, and one candidate works for an external school district. Given your individual professional backgrounds outside of the Wentzville School District, how would you ensure that the will of your constituents would be represented? How have you prioritized making meaningful connections to Wentzville, its parents, students, and overall community? We'll begin with Dr. Way, you have 90 seconds.
Yeah, um, I, I can just say that, that most of my adult life has been surrounded by kids. In any district that I've served, I've been very lucky to have my kids here the whole time. And my wife and I, um, we come from a family that we believe in serving others. And so if my wife's on PTA, my wife and I have been band parents for six years. Um, this is our first year, we've missed it. Um, but, uh, you know, we have both, and again, my wife helps me in my district. I mean, she comes to some of my events as well. And so as far as making meaningful connections in Wentzville, I, I think we've done that by the 20-plus years we've been here and our kids going up through the, the system. Um, so I'm not really worried about that. Um, what have you prioritized making meaningful? Yes, I mean, absolutely, like, in, in education, I'm in education, thankfully. And so it's a small world, and a lot of the people that I've worked with in other districts work here or their kids go here. And so I am definitely, um, have a lot of connections both inside the district and outside the district. And I think being somebody from outside, worked outside the district, and, and being involved with a lot of different situations and outcomes can only help, um, make the board a little better. It's just a different take on, um, making that team better, I guess.
Thank you, Dr. Way. Dr. Scott, you now have the floor.
Thank you, I love this question. Um, so myself, I came from, I come from a healthcare background, and I served our community as a nurse practitioner in a practice locally, uh, for just shy of 12 years. So I physically got to see a lot of patients, um, that lived in our community, and you really get to develop those relationships. Um, but in terms of like the greater community as well, I think participating, um, you know, I've been, um, a Girl Scout troop leader. I have, you know, been on both of my kids' PTOs. I, you know, get to know parents and, you know, community members through like sports activities and other activities. So I think, you know, really being present and, um, is, is very important. And I think that, you know, we've had the opportunity to meet with a lot of parents and other stakeholders of various PTOs and PTAs through this election cycle. And I think that it's just really important to understand that, obviously, um, you know, we have to have these connections with each other. We have to be open and available to other people to have, you know, really difficult conversations. And we also have to listen, you know, we have to really have good conversation and understand that the board is seven people, and it's good that we're not all seven of the same person. So I think that certainly, you know, Jeremy's experience as an educator in a different district, um, my experience in healthcare, we have different skill sets, and I think that they complement each other really well.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Here's your third question. The words diversity, equity, and inclusion have been buzzwords in recent politics, especially in regards to education and the funding that public schools receive in relation to these terms. What are specific ways that you plan to make every Wentzville student feel comfortable in the school district as the student body continues to diversify? We'll begin with Dr. Scott, you have 90 seconds.
So diversity is not a four-letter word. And I think diversity only makes us better as a district, as a school board, as a community. And I want every single student to feel safe coming to school every day. And I want every single student to get a great education. And if that means that they are, it's equity or it's inclusive, then that's what it is. These are not bad words. These are words that should be, um, you know, really used as a benefit to our district. Um, you know, every day, parents put their kids on the bus, they drop their kids off at school, and trust that the district is going to take care of them that day, and that their kids are gonna come home safely. And we need to foster a community of safety, of inclusion, where every student can feel safe, where every student can feel comfortable coming to school, and that, you know, every parent has the, you know, can rest easy knowing that their kids are gonna be okay under our care. And, um, I really truly mean that with, you know, my whole being, that I really want, um, every student to have a safe and, um, and, and a great, not just safe, but like really enjoy coming to school and like really feel involved and, um, and welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Dr. Way, you now have the floor.
Yeah, I, I think we talked about earlier that trying to keep politics out of school board elections. Um, and again, I, I don't care what the buzzwords are. What we want is that we want every kid or all of our kids, um, like Doc said, to feel safe, uh, to wanna come to school, and to give them opportunities while they're here. One of the things I, I've never taken my kids out of Wentzville school districts to be in the district I've worked at or any of the districts I've worked at, because I think they get a great education here. There's, there's different things that they can do. My, my daughter is going to, to Rala to study, uh, science, and my son went to Lynn Tech to study, uh, to be a mechanic. And so that's the same house, and we have that all throughout our district. And so we want to give every single kid every opportunity to be successful. That's what we care about. I don't care what you call it, what, what buzzwords you put on there, um, but it's all kids all the time, that's what we care about. I think Wentzville does a great job of, of having those opportunities for those kids, and I want to see that continued, whether you're a sports kid, a journalism kid, whatever it is that you have opportunities to do what you want to do, and you want to come to school. And those are our hooks to get you here and give you a great education.
Thank you, Dr. Way. That concludes our responses to the third question, and we will now move on.
Here's the fourth audience question. Dr. Scott, you'll start us off. In 2023, a new cellphone policy that prohibited cellphone usage during class was implemented throughout the Wentzville School District. As of this past school year, the cellphone policy has undergone even stricter revisions, assigning detentions or in-school suspensions for first-time offenses. District rules, including those regarding cellphone usage, may be inconsistent throughout the district. Do you have any plans to alter the cellphone policy and ensure the rules are enforced consistently? We'll begin with Dr. Scott.
So this was a very interesting policy that came about. And I think, um, overall has been pretty well received. I don't know about from students, sorry guys, but from, you know, like the administrators and the teachers. And I do wish that it was more consistently applied across the district. And I think that that is happening. I think, um, so we do kind of have plans in place, like for reports at board meetings, for the, um, you know, various players in this, um, policy implementation to kind of bring some of that data back to us and say, this is what is happening, this is what is not happening here, you know, and really giving us a good idea of how the district is managing this, and then what data comes from that. Our student, you know, are students getting in more trouble? Probably initially, yeah, because you guys want your cellphones. Um, but, so there, you know, might be a little spike in, in disciplinary action against that. Um, but then, you know, over time, how does that look? Are, you know, student scores doing better? You know, some of these things you can, you can draw lines to, um, you know, correlate with these decision-making. So I think right now, um, it could, I mean, it could even be a little bit more strict. But, um, I also understand that we are living in a digital age. So, um, as of right now, I think we just continue evaluating what we've got in place and go from there.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Dr. Way, you now have the floor.
Yeah, I, I think when you look at this, it looks like you guys started this in 2023, so this might be the second year of doing this. Um, you've gotta look at the data, like, how many kids initially were getting written up? Um, let's look at some survey from our, from our teachers. Are they feeling like they can teach more in the classroom? They're having less disruptions? I'd like to see what that data looks like. The only thing that I didn't like on the question was maybe inconsistent. I think no matter what the policy is, and, and like you said, probably the kids are not for it. They, they love their cellphones, I, I get it, we all do. Um, but if you can just not have them for that certain time, but I think what gets us is if it's inconsistent. I can do it in this classroom or not this one, or in this school or not that school. I think that's where we have to try to, to be better on that policy. But again, it's looking at the data, looking at our teachers, um, and like Julie said, you know, looking at our test scores. Are we, are we better because of this policy? Or it's not making any changes, you know? So looking at those things before we come up with stricter rules or, and then being consistent is huge.
Thank you, Dr. Way. That concludes our response to the fourth question, and we will now move on.
This will now be the final question for the night. Holt is the oldest high school in the district, and constituents are worried about it being not as up to par as the other three high schools. Among students and parents, attention across different WSD schools and their resources are perceived to be unevenly divided. What are your plans to even out any funding discrepancies among WSD facilities? How would any new allocation include updating technology, new textbooks, and transportation? We will begin with Dr. Way, you have 90 seconds.
Yeah, we talked about with, um, Prop L earlier. So I think there has to be a plan, um, if Prop L doesn't pass, and, and I hope it does. But, um, you've gotta look at our capital projects. So if it doesn't pass, what are some of the capital projects we can do at Holt to make it better? Is it HVAC, um, like you said, technology? What are some of those things that we can do? Um, I, I believe, I'm very hopeful that Prop L will pass, and therefore some of those legacy schools will be, get a touch up and get some love. Um, but, um, you know, I, I can just tell you from a personal standpoint, uh, we are in that process with both my kids where they had that opportunity to, to stay at Holt or to go to North Point. And they chose to stay at Holt because of their friends and the activities they were involved in. So sometimes it's not all about the facilities, it's about other things, your attachments to your friends and your teachers and wanting to be a part of that school. So, uh, anything we can do to help the facility is obviously important, but, um, it's not everything in school.
Thank you, Dr. Way. Dr. Scott, the stage is yours.
So I, you know, wanna kind of piggyback off Jeremy's answer too. I mean, Prop, this really, you know, lends itself well to the Prop L discussion as well. And I think it's important for voters to remember that those Holt, you know, uh, community members are also people who voted to help support the growth of our district for them. And, you know, in Liberty, here at Liberty, or at Timberland, or at North Point. And so now it's their turn. So I really do think, um, that these schools in Holt, uh, you know, specifically does need some help. Um, there have been some things that have been updated here and there, but, you know, it really does need to have a significant chunk of change put into it to really bring it up, because it isn't, it's not, you know, equitable for, you know, all of the technology that is in the newer buildings that, you know, Holt doesn't have. Or even just like the physical seats in the, in the auditorium, or, you know, the sound systems and things like that. I mean, it really does impact every student, you know, in some way, shape, or form. So, um, you know, having, I think advocating for Prop L is a big piece for me as a candidate. But I think if that doesn't pass, you know, there are gonna be some hard discussions, you know, amongst the administration and the, you know, for the budget, of where does that money come from? Because certainly, they really do need, they need some attention.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. With that, we conclude the final round of questioning for this evening. Each candidate will now be given 60 seconds for a closing statement. Dr. Way, you may go first.
Yeah, I, um, I really don't have too much of a closing statement. I just wanna thank you guys, first of all, this is incredible. This is why we try to get on the school board and, and stay on the school board. So kudos to you guys, it's really cool. Um, I also want to take a minute to thank kind of the team behind me, uh, that has helped me in the last couple of months. I, I don't wanna name names, but you know who you are, kind of behind the scenes, my family. Um, I just wanna say thank you, this has been a, a great opportunity. And, uh, just let everybody know, if you, if you're gonna vote, you can only have one yes in your heart, and it's either for Way or for Prop L. Do Prop L next Tuesday, okay? It's that important. Um, but thank you so much for your time tonight, appreciate it, guys.
Thank you, Dr. Way. Dr. Scott, you're the final speaker.
Yeah, thank you. And huge thank you to you guys, like, I, this is so impressive. You guys are so professional, I'm so blown away by how great of a job you do, and I really appreciate the opportunity for being here tonight. And, you know, again, huge thanks to the team who's been supporting us, the family, um, all of the people who have been, you know, helping us behind the scenes has been instrumental. To every supporter out there, everybody who's taken a sign or who's, um, you know, expressed their opinion, who's helped Canvas, seriously could not do it without you, and, um, am asking for your vote on April 8th. So thank you guys for having us.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. That concludes tonight's Town Hall meeting.
We would like to thank our candidates for their time and our viewers at home for joining us tonight. A special thanks to our student team who volunteered their time to make this event possible.
Each candidate's bios and email addresses can be found on the WSD website under About Our District on the Board of Education page. We encourage you to read each candidate's submitted bios to learn more about all four candidates.
Please remember to go out and vote on Tuesday, April 8th. The deadline to register to vote for the upcoming election has passed, but absentee voting has begun if you will not be able to attend the day of.
Be sure to follow us on Facebook at WSDBOE Town Hall and on Instagram at BOEWSD Town Hall for all information regarding the Town Hall, recaps of tonight's event, and election updates.
Once again, please remember to go and vote on April 8th. To all candidates, we wish you the best of luck. Thank you for joining us and good night.